Okay, welcome. I would like to call the April 11, 2024 Plan Commission to Order 701. If you can, please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands for our mission under God, indivisible, and for its正义.
Thank you. Samantha, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Jan Platau.
Here.
Jeff Peterson.
Here.
John Stanton. Ken Carroll.
Here.
Cheryl Slavazeski.
Here.
Angelo DiCiriel. And Bill Thomas.
Here. Thank you. So, our first order of business is I need a motion to approve the minutes from the Plan Commission meeting held March 14, 2024.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Plateau, second by Commissioner Slavazeski. Roll call, please.
Jan Platau.
Yes.
Cheryl Slavazeski.
Yes.
Jeff Peterson.
Yes.
Ken Carroll.
Yes.
And Bill Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, we have one item on our agenda for tonight, and it is case SU-24-2-4-1. A request of Edith Murillo, one of the owners of Platinum Triple Play, seeking approval of an M2 special use for a parking variation and a parking setback for an indoor recreational facility to operate a DBATs indoor baseball and softball training academy at the property located at 425 Caton Farm Road, Crest Hill, Illinois. Samantha, is all the paperwork in order?
The necessary paperwork is in order.
Okay, with that, I would like to open the public hearing for case SU-24-2-4-1. I need a motion.
So.
Motion by Commissioner Carroll. Second by Commissioner Plateau. Roll call, please.
Ken Carroll.
Yes.
Jan Platau.
Yes.
Jeff Peterson.
Yes.
Cheryl Slavazeski.
Yes.
And Bill Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so, the subject of this public hearing is again case SU-24-2-4-1. I would like to ask our interim city planner, Maura, regarding to present the specifics of the case. Maura?
Thank you, Chairman. So before you this evening is a special use request for an indoor recreation facility as well as two variations relating to parking setback and the total number of parking spaces. The subject parcel is at 425 Caton Farm Road, and the applicant's Platinum Triple Play proposed to establish a DBATs operation, which is a baseball and sports, a baseball and softball facility for training, for indoor batting cages and so forth. A little specifics about the property, it is located at 425, and there is an existing building on there, which is 12,749 square feet. It is a warehouse building that is currently on the property. The existing building will be remodeled to accommodate the floor plan and needs for such a facility, as mentioned that it is for youth and softball training. There are some modifications that have to be done interior. The applicant has worked, been in contact extensively with our building commissioners to ensure that they are maintaining any requirements for both building and fire codes as well. There is part of the development, right now, there is very little parking as the existing building, there's a small parking area on the north end of the property. With this building, they will be expanding the requirements of the parking by adding some parallel on the east side of the building, as well as then a parking field on the south end of the building. In relationship to the parking variation, that ordinance establishes this in the same as an indoor recreation club gymnasium, which would require one parking space per 150 square feet. Due to the nature of this, that would generate a number of parking spaces. I believe that it would, is a variation from a total of, I believe it's some eighty-some parking spaces, reducing down to thirty-nine parking spaces. The applicant has provided some information in your packet to further define, and they're here to explain the nature of the business and the need for the parking, as it is generally geared towards youth who are not driving and drop-off situations as well. With also that, there is a parking setback variation, and that is for the east property line. The ordinance requires that all parking lots maintain a five-foot setback from the property line. This is utilizing a, the shared drive that is coming off of Caton Farm Road that exists. Therefore, with having a shared drive that straddles a parking lot, straddles the parking lot with the shared property line, having that required setback would not be possible. So with this, we're asking, or the applicant is asking to seek a variation from that five-foot requirement. In your packet, Exhibit A does show the site plan that's proposed. As you can see, right down the middle there, there's a gray line that is the property line, and you can see that there is a 24-foot aisle that, that does straddle both the property line of the subject parcel and that to the east. Access to the parcel to and from does utilize that property to the east. With that, it is under common ownership at this time that both of those properties, so crossing back and forth is, that would be permitted. Is part of this consideration is asking for a easement to be granted across access to allow for that to occur, because you are crossing different properties. Even though the intent is that, that they are under common ownership, we always want to forward think, and should at some point one property get sold and so forth. Therefore, this development would still have that right to access that property to the area to the back. That's the request for the, the access easement. The other would noted that there is new parking lot improvements, and with new parking lot improvements also come engineering requirements. So they have been working extensively and talking back and forth with the engineers in terms of what would require in terms of stormwater and drainage to ensure that they not only meet the city requirements, but also the county requirements as, as well. I will leave the applicant to speak more about the business plan, but in your case, that in your packet, there is a, a business plan which shows further describing the operation, and also is anything we can tie, you know, business hours and so forth, is part of the special use. In your packet there, we do give you the standards for both the special use and the variation is any consideration, they must meet both of those standards for those. I'm here if you have any additional questions. I will leave to the applicant to provide more detail about the function of the facility, as this is relatively unique, and I don't know if we've had one in my time here before you, but if there's anything relating to the parking and so forth, I'm more than happy to answer.
All right, thank you, Maura. So, is there anybody here wants to talk about DBATs?
Yeah, I guess so.
All right, is there going to be a spokesman, or do several of you want to come up? All right, please come to the podium, I think there's a sheet for you to sign your name.
Yes.
I'm guessing you're Edith?
I am.
Okay.
Nice to meet you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may offer the Exhibit B, which is the presentation to Ms. Edith as what's in your packet, so she knows, so she can kind of follow along.
Yeah, that was quite an incredible presentation. So, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God?
I do.
Okay.
Perfect. We were trying to get our really impressive presentation, thank you so much. So, we will have to go back to the basics, and I apologize to our audience. Okay, again, my name is Edith Murillo. My partners and I, we represent Platinum Triple Play LLC, and we are here today to present to you our business proposal for DBAT Lockport. Okay, so, who is DBAT? What is DBAT about? DBAT is a franchised baseball and softball sports academy. They have multiple locations throughout the United States and overseas. They render services, including memberships, camps, clinics, parties, lessons, and more, and they welcome patrons of all ages stemming from T-ballers through college and beyond. A little bit about DBAT's mission statement, they believe in youth, they believe in empowerment, they believe in encouraging. And so as part of their mission statement, I'm just paraphrasing, their goal is to improve the physical and mental skills of our youth on and off the baseball field. And a lot of that representation will come directly from their acronym, DBAT. DBAT stands for the Developing Beliefs, Attitudes, and Traditions. And so all of those values embody what they represent and what they want to continue representing as their franchise grows and grows. Some fun history about DBAT. Before it became a franchise, it was actually a standalone baseball facility named Dallas Baseball Academy of Texas, founded and owned by brothers Kate and Kyle Griffiths in 1998. Three locations, 11 years later, they branched their business venue, venture out to a franchise, the franchise world, and today, there are currently 170 DBAT locations across 34 states in the United States, six in China, and 20 locations that are currently in progress, including DBAT Lockport. So one of the cool things about being a part of the DBAT family is, as soon as you become, you know, you sign on and you become a member of their, their franchise, they provide you with a lot of really neat things to make you feel welcomed. One of these very, very interesting things is called the Wall of Fame. And so the Wall of Fame is essentially a collage of professional athletes, past and present, who have trained at a DBAT facility at one point in time. It's also used to empower and to encourage current employees and instructors to reach different levels, different heights, become a part of that wall, perhaps beyond even, you know, the DBAT nature. And it also serves as an encouraging memento for all the, you know, our young patrons to see all of these, you know, once upon a time, 12, 13-year-olds, now MLB players, making their dream come true. And I, this is a very, very thick list, so I kind of know my presentation off the top of my head, so please don't try to follow along. Clayton Kershaw, Ben Zobres, they are one of the two members that really pop out on that Wall of Fame, and so if you're a Chicago, Chicago fan, period, Ben Zobres, former Chicago Cub, and Clayton Kershaw, current pitcher for the LA Dodgers, they both trained when, you know, they were in their Little League and in their travel years at a local DBAT. Clayton Kershaw has been known to peek his head in once in a while and, you know, make appearances. Can't say the same thing about Ben Zobres, but I will definitely do what I can to get him at DBAT Lockport. Another thing that is really great about, again, joining the franchise is how they provide you with additional support as you are commencing your, you know, startup, per se, business. You know, they connect you with your contacts, they give you guides, they give you checklists, and one of those checklists is actually critical, because it identifies how to identify your ideal building. And so just some context, context background, my partners and I had been looking for a building since 2021, so it's been a long journey, many buildings, very close, but just like any new homeowner, new home buyer, you walk into 50 homes, and it might be the 51st that you fall in love with. And that's exactly how we fell, felt when we saw 425 Caton Farm Road. It mentally checked off all our boxes, but we needed to go back to those boxes to ensure that it did have one of the top, or three of the, the top lists, listings. One of them is a standalone building, check. Two is sufficient parking, and according to our DBAT franchise guidelines, they do expect at least 25 parking spaces per facility, so we do have the space. We are working really well with our landlord, and as Maura explained earlier, 39 spaces is what we are currently seeking the variance for, 37 regular spaces and two handicaps, so check there. And at least four high schools and elementary schools within a 10-mile radius, so check and check. Okay, so, enough of the franchise. What will DBAT Lockport uniquely offer? So again, as part of a franchise, DBAT Lockport has standards and has a certain expectation that we must abide by as far as being a part of a sisterhood or a brotherhood. But, DBAT Lockport will be located at a standalone building, 12,390 square feet, state-of-the-art equipment, including batting cages, pitching machines, an instructor's lounge, party room, and a pro shop powered by Rawlings. Our hours of operation will vary depending on the season. In the summertime, because our days are longer and the children are out of school, we will have, we'll open up earlier and extend our hours, you know, throughout the day. In the either winter months, fall months, or when the children are back in school, we want to accommodate their schedules, so we will be open a little later, but our, again, our hours will be extended to accommodate school, dinner, so on and so forth. With that being said, again, many, many slides, two of the main concerns that we had when we were looking for the ideal location was child safety and parent commodity. And so let me explain what I mean by that. Child safety, everyone wants to make sure that, you know, children, as they're coming out of their cars, going in and out of the building, whether it's being dropped off or coming with their parents or coming with their coaches, that they are in a safe environment, both inter, interiorly and exteriorly, okay? And so, again, I'm so sorry that I can't display the parking image, but you have that layout in front of you. The parking is essentially going to have spaces on the north part of the building, which is the front side of the building. If patrons wish to proceed and park elsewhere, there will be parking on the east side of the building. Currently, we will have our entryway on the east side of the building, so if, you know, parents or anyone is dropping off their, their child, the child isn't running across the parking lot, they will have access directly in front of the door. In addition, let's say that the parents want to park in the south parking, the rear parking, well, there will be what I call an S-curve passage, passageway, where parents will be able to navigate through the lanes, and they will be able to exit the same way that they entered. So, again, parent commodity, where it is, you know, parents might already be saturated because of traffic, because of work, what have you, we want to make it as seamless and smooth as possible for parents bringing their children and providing our services to them. And then again, children who are stepping out of the building, if they want to meet their parents in the parking lot in the rear, we will have a sidewalk hugging the south side of the building, where they may wait for their parents or individual picking them up to drive up, scoop them up, and be on their way. So we've thought about all of these matters, of course, it is one of the biggest concerns. Our landlord has been really great about working with us and getting everything, you know, ready and going, complying with both the easement on the east side of the building, allowing us to, as cars are pulling out and conducting their Y, their three-point turn, they will enter his property, he owns the property as well next door. And so, we've already had that conversation, it's going to be put in a legal format, of course, where he will comply to allow us that easement. And again, the parking in the rear will also be repaired and adjusted in accordance to be able to comply with both city rules and safety for, for our children. I don't have the slides, I was going to show some really cool pictures of how engaged our, you know, partnership is with baseball. Our children have met Luis Robert from the White Sox, they've met Ron Kittle, former White Sox, Ben Zobres, former Cub, and Anthony Rizzo, former Cub. And so, our purpose in, in this business is not, oh, this is a great revenue, you know, stream, yes, but it's also the passion, the knowledge, and the drive. Our children breathe, sleep, eat baseball, and we're right there with them on the sidelines. And so, those, those role models are the role models of yesterday and the role models of today. I am super surprised and like astonished to see so many supporters here. I love the fact that they're wearing their baseball gear, and so they are our role models of tomorrow. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Well, well done.
Thank you.
Let me see if we have some questions for you, Commissioner Plateau?
None at this time.
Commissioner Peterson?
Oh, you did very good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carroll?
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, well, you're not getting off that easy.
Oh, come on. The technology already kicked my butt.
Now, that, that presentation that you handed out was, was awesome, it was fun reading it, honestly.
Thank you.
Okay, so in looking at Exhibit A, which is your plan of the building.
Yes.
And the 39 parking spots that you are requesting, I bet I've counted this five times, and I'm getting like 27 is the most I see there. Where, where are the other ones going to be?
So we have 27 in the rear, I believe, and I'm not, I don't have, I have to stretch through it, I believe there's an additional five on the side, is there? And then the, there's an additional, the other five or so are in the, in the front on the north part of the building. So they're dispersed northeast and south.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there's, what is happening on the east side of the building is parallel parking.
Yes.
So you have a pocket which has the handicap on the north end, as well as then those slots, there's some hatched, there's some hatched ones which are obviously no parking, and then you have one, two, three, four, five, five parallel parkings on the east side, and then the pocket of parking on the south.
Yeah, and then I counted five in the front and 27, so there's...
There's seven in the front? Yeah, there's seven in the front, one, two, three, four.
Yep, seven.
Yep, and then...
Except for that crosshairs one, does that mean there's no parking there? Well, that's an 88 parking.
Correct. Correct.
And that would be the reason that we are asking for the easement from the 415 address east of us.
And my other question, boy, it sounded like you were, you were looking over my shoulder when I wrote this in here, but I was really concerned about the safety of the kids, particularly in the drop-off and pickup.
Yes.
And I was envisioning a mother dropping off her child who's late for work and drops him off, and peels out of there, and what concerned me was the way this road is configured, right now, for you to exit after you drop off a person is to go through the parking lot and sort of make a turn. And parking lots are some of the most dangerous places for children to walk or for people to drive.
Correct.
And I was thinking, because you have so much room on the east side, have you thought about, after you drop them off, and at the end of the building on the south end, making a U-turn so you don't have to go through the parking lot? Just make a U-turn and go right back out where you've got it done? I don't, I mean, I don't know how the scale of a car fits in those drawings of the road, but then they wouldn't have to go through the parking lot at all.
That is a possibility, I mean, that's something that we, we've played with the different options, and of course, children's safety has always been number one. We understand parents don't want to have to navigate around. But if I may interject for just one second, one of the slides that, that I completely forgot in my head was the fact that my partners and I, whether it's together or individually, have actually visited all of the locations in the Illinois market and Sherrville, Indiana, with the exception of Champagne that just opened recently. All of them except Rockford share farm parking with retail shops. That would be really alarming and concerning to us, right? Because we can't, we can, we can control the DBAT traffic, but we can't enforce that upon our neighbors. What I love about this building is the fact that it is exclusive to us. So, again, not to go against your, your concern, because it's a legitimate concern, but anyone who's coming into that area knows that they are going to DBAT, they're not going to Target, they're not going to Home Goods or Home Depot, they know exactly that by entering that facility, they are going to encounter youth. And so, common sense, which sometimes is not so common these days, tells parents, slow down, children might run around, you tell your child, don't run, look both ways, what do they do? Look down on their phone and continue walking, right? So we do want to make sure that we do have all the safety measures in place, and I understand having parents maybe struggle going around the parking lot. They wouldn't necessarily have to go all the way around, they, they are able to cut through the south, come, loop around once, and then just come right back. And again, not opposing your concern, but compared to finding space in a retail area or that, that concern of my child might get hit by a car, you know, from someone coming out of Sam's Club, this concern is limited, because it's only our patrons entering and exiting.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, we did at length... Mr. Chairman, if I may add, we did at length look at this with staff in terms of circulation and so forth. The intent was trying to keep as much as we could on this property itself. Also with the expansion, any new pavement requires stormwater detention. So trying to look at that, but also make sure that we're separating it from the property to the east as much as possible, because it is, the uses, knowing that they are so separate. So that was one of the, the areas was trying to maintain and keep as much improvements relating to this development, because it is unique on their property, on, on the subject parcel. And even though it has that cross-access onto the east, but trying to keep it just as, as compact as we possibly could.
Would speed bumps along the side of the building, possibly a consideration for that?
My concern with the speed bumps, one, sometimes it doesn't really stop. It just, you know, it just, they speed and go over. My other is, is that, you know, what the development would happen or what's occurring on the off-times of the property to the east. Generally, I'm guessing most of your operations are in the evening times and so forth.
That is correct.
So just in terms of, of that, I, you know, I, I would have to probably chat with the engineers to see if they find that to be important. The difficulty is, is that the property to the east is not fully developed in terms of pavement and they're only paving on here, so making sure they're going to pave the drive and so forth. So, you know, if the, if speed is concerned, we can, we can talk about that. There's some other items in terms of engineering, it has to go through final engineering. It has not done that. You know, I would recommend that they have one-way signs and so forth, so we haven't gotten to that point. If speed's a concern, we can talk about speed bumps, but I would probably lean on the engineer to see if that's really in how it even functions with the operation of the property to the east.
Did I read in the read-ahead that we would consider letting them park on the gravel if there was a need for overflow parking?
That's a conversation that, that, that there has been. I mean, that could be overflow parking, but I'm, I'm guessing that the operation is probably in those off-times. I'm not speaking...
And I can answer, I can answer that too, Maura. I can definitely assist with that. And so, I guess when someone thinks, oh, twelve thousand three ninety square foot facility, it's a sports facility, we're going to have a population of three hundred, four hundred individuals at the same time. Realistically, I wish that was the case, because then I would buy the property to the west and to the east of me. But DBAT structures their programs systematically to, number one, prevent that and number two, to be able to offer all of their services as an equal opportunity. What I mean by that is, you take your camps and clinics, which are two of the most popular services that DBAT offers. Your camps and your clinics are run at a standard nine AM to two PM timeframe. At that point, that limits the cage use, because just try to envision, the cages are, are in a certain like semi-circular area. Those cages, the nets are then drawn back, exposing that infield space where camps and clinics are held. At the, at the end of those camps and clinics, nets are resumed back to their normal form and then cages are able to be utilized again. In addition, we do welcome walk-ins and they're always going to be welcomed, but the best, the best and most practical way of utilizing our cage system is through an online reservation POS. So before you get there, your cage is already booked. That, number one, prevents any double booking, any issues, any complaints. And number two, it ensures that we have a steady flow of patrons coming and going, sort of like a revolving door. So again, although we would love an overflow of patrons, maybe with the exception of opening day, we would anticipate these, like Maura stated, the hours to kind of fluctuate and the, the traffic to fluctuate, whereas some group is coming in, some group is leaving. I hope that helped answer it.
Getting back to your parking here, I noticed that you've got evening business hours. I think it was nine o'clock at night during the week that you're open?
Yes.
Will you be, will it be lighting in the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. Now, we don't, I don't have the specifics and schematics of the lighting, but the, the franchise does have specific lighting requirements, as well as when we are working with our electrical engineer, they're, they're going to advise us the same.
Might recommend that the commission consider conditioning on final engineering, final landscaping, final photometric, and all of those items that would have to be in compliance prior to, which is just a requirement of the ordinance, it's just an extra safety guard.
Yeah. And my only other thought I had, again, I was looking at this with really concern for safety of the young people. As you obviously have stated, you have the, probably even more of it. But on the east paved area, which is the exit area, I was wondering if we would consider a curb, a low curb, along that side, which would prevent anybody from the east building crossing over into your entrance-exit area? And that's why I was asking about the parking. If you were going to allow them to go across there and park, well, you're not, you're not going to go over that, you know, eight-inch curb or whatever it is. But that was just another thought to keep any other traffic from coming on your property, except for coming in the exit, entrance-exit. But, I mean, what I'm speaking of, they're not showstoppers. I mean, you have a great concern and you talked about it. These were just thoughts that, is there anything we can do reasonably economically, since you haven't done it yet?
Right.
And...
Of course, and I will tell you one thing. Compared to all the other facilities, our parking is probably going to be like the number-one safest DBAT that we've visited so far. I mean, I appreciate the concern, because we, we have young children as well, so that's our number-one concern. They obviously thought differently and, yes, they do have their safety precautions, but we are probably thinking ten times the, the caution that they are. And of course, everything is on the table for discussion. Financially and economically, we do have to discuss those terms with the landlord, because he is providing the parking structure for us. But it's definitely something that we'll take into consideration.
Getting back to your exit here, the way I look at this entrance and exit, it looks like a right-in, right-out? Or can they make a left-hand turn as going back out?
They can. And what I want to kind of stress two points is, and I'll, and I'll talk about, this exit, entrance and exit serves two properties. So we don't want to put barrier curb, because the same operation that's occurring on the property of the east will be utilizing those portions to go out. It is, it looks like it's oversized, there's an island actually there specifically, because there is a light pole there, so to protect that. So yes, they can, it is both ways, they can come in, they can come out, they can make a left turn as well. So they, that is a full entrance, it's not limiting on their movement. I'd also like to reiterate that the intent is, is that all parking will be provided on this, on this site. There's not, we're not anticipating or not, not, I guess, in this nature, approving any additional parking on the subject property to the east, as these are the improvements that are being made. You know, we're trying to be reasonable in the property to the east about paving it and so forth, but the intent is, is that, you know, that this, this is providing the parking that they need for that and that we should not have overflow parking onto the others.
Again, wishful thinking, I wish we had three hundred patrons at once. You would all get in there for free.
Are we done asking our questions? All right, thank you, Edith.
Thank you.
Now, is there anybody in the audience that would like to come to the podium and make a statement, plus or minus? Yes, please come. Please sign in the paper that's there and then...
Sure. My name is Michael Bezeli. I don't have any...
Raise your right hand for me, please, will you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you, Mike.
My name is Michael Bezeli. I don't have any type of partnership with them or anything. I'm a little bit older than them, even though I look very, very young, but my son actually went through this whole entire thing. He has become very, very successful in everything that he has done. He, he is graduating, excuse me, college this year, where he is playing baseball, he's been a four-year starter in college. Unfortunately, he did not go with DBATs. He went with a different company called the Illinois Sparks or Candelosi Sparks, the Bow Dome right on three fifty-five. Fortunately, not everyone is like myself, where we could pay those big fees for that big beautiful dome, where people have to go to smaller places, different communities, to get this kind of education in baseball. He started when he was very, very young. It is great to see all these, all the youth here. I think it's very, very important for them to do something like this. It will keep them off the street. It teaches them time management, hard work, dedication. Something that I'm very, very proud of my son. He was ranked number five in high school academically. He was a three-year starter for baseball in high school. He was a four-year starter in college. He holds a three-point-nine grade point average in college. I'm not quite sure what kind of fraternity he's in, but he got one for being in the top ten percent of all academics in college. Okay? He is, he actually will probably help these guys out. He is a pitcher. We are very, very fortunate, myself and my wife, that we were very, very successful in life. And we have always taught both, both of our children to give back. And he is more than willing to help. He actually, I do work with one of the people that are the owners here, and he has helped his son with some baseball stuff. And he continue will, even when they do get this business up and running in the future. With that being said, it's great for the community. Hillcrest needs it. It's not a Hinsdale, it's not a Burr Ridge. All these kids, they need something, a place to go. They'll find friends for life. They might have a career, maybe they won't make it to the major leagues, but maybe they'll do something with sports medicine. And this is a gateway for them to help them out in each and every way that they find needs, that they possibly will. My son, I always refer to him. The game of baseball has made him into the person that he is. He went to a high school that was a very hard high school, both academic and athletic-wise. He used to get picked up at five-thirty in the morning every single day for baseball and he would get dropped off at eight o'clock at night, starting when he was fourteen years of age. He did that all the way till he was eighteen years of age. And if you ask him right now, he says he would never change it for the world. It builds a culture and with culture, it's time management. These kids nowadays, unfortunately, they're not like us. Okay? When I was a teenager, when I was younger, my parents would kick me out of the house. We didn't have video games or iPhones or anything like that. If you would ask all these young kids here, have you ever drank out of a garden hose? They have no idea what we're talking about. They have no idea what we're talking about, which is so true, right? It is something that I believe in. My daughter plays volleyball in college. My son plays baseball in college. Sports, may it be softball, baseball, golf, tennis, swimming, polo, whatever it may be. It's something that keeps them engaged. Now, everyone might not make it to college. Maybe they want to go to a trade school, which is absolutely fine. But the hardest times in their life might be from the age of eighteen to eighteen and at least they'll be involved with something. I think it's a fantastic idea. I wish them all the very best of luck. And with the, with the board being here right now, I don't know how you could turn any of these kids down. So with that being said...
Thank you, Mike.
Best of luck, everyone. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come to the podium? All right, so if that be the case, I would like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Plateau, second by Commissioner Peterson. Roll call, please.
Jan Platon.
Yes.
Jeff Peterson.
Yes.
Ken Carroll.
Yes.
Cheryl Slavazewski.
Yes.
And Bill Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Seven forty-one. Okay. So how are we feeling about it, okay?
I have one question. Can we change the name to DBAT Crest Hill?
May I say something? That has been the biggest heartburn. We went from Lockport Incorporated, Lockport to Crest Hill, so we can name it whatever you want and we put a stamp on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like me to read those out, you just let me know.
Okay. Okay, let me make a couple of comments. I, I've been down to that location and after reading this and hearing your passion about this, I really, and I couldn't look inside, but I don't think you could have found a better location for what you want to do when you consider four different cities can get there with very little trouble. I mean, what an outstanding choice. And, but I echo, just, boy, I, I mean, I think we're pretty excited about having DBAT in Crest Hill. Doc gone, couldn't be Lockport slash Crest Hill? So before we give you our, our decision, I will tell you that our decision is going to have some conditions tied to it. And I think rather than read them all, and they're not bad, I'm going to ask Maura to summarize what the conditions would be for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just so the record knows, that the, I did share the report with the applicant, so...
Okay.
They should be, yep. So the recommendations, conditions for consideration would be: Finalization of the cross-access easement with the property to the east, conditioned upon final engineering, landscaping, photometric, and compliance with building and fire code requirements. And that the special use shall be in accordance with the business plan as attached as Exhibit B.
Okay, thank you. Are you going to be able to share that with...
I most certainly will.
Okay, thank you. So I mean, basically what we're saying is, we want to make sure everything is done before you move in. And, you know, so we're just putting it as a condition of approval. So with that, can I have a motion to approve the request from Platinum Triple Play for approval of an M-two special use for a parking variation allowing for thirty-nine spaces and a parking setback variation for an indoor recreational facility to operate a DBAT indoor baseball and softball trading academy at the property located at four-two-five Caton Farm Road, Crest Hill, contingent on the conditions that were just summarized?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Peterson, second by Commissioner Plateau. Roll call, please.
Jeff Peterson.
Yes.
Jan Platon.
Yes.
Cheryl Slavazewski.
Yes.
Ken Carroll.
Yes.
And Bill Thomas.
Absolutely, yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so, the Plan Commission has approved your request from Platinum Triple Play for approval of the M-two special use. And it will be now forwarded to the City Council. So I have to remind you, the Plan Commission is a recommending body only. It is our City Council that will make the final decision. And I probably, we probably don't have a date yet for when that might be.
No, Mr. Chairman, we do not, but I will follow up the applicant either tomorrow or early next week and summarize everything and establish the timeline from this point forward.
Okay, thank you. And of course, it, I think it'd be awesome, the City Council meets in this room and we got enough room for all of you to come back. That'd be a pretty impressive display. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation and excellent support group.
Thank you.
And we wish you nothing but the best and, and good luck at the City Council. So thank you all for coming, thank you.
Thank you.
So is there any other business that we have to discuss?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Next month is going to be my last meeting here with the Planning Commission, because I'm going to be retiring. Yeah, great. And I'll be moving out of state. I'll be going to the state of Indiana for my retirement. I'll be going to the state of Indiana for my retirement, so... So, thank you. But I just wanted to inform...
All right.
You, Mr. Chairman, and of course, all my fellow commissioners that are going to be retiring and moving on my way here. So, I've been doing this since 2015, and so, I enjoyed every bit of it and loved every opportunity that I could get with the city here.
So... All right, well, thank you. You will be missed and...
Thank you.
Look forward to talking more about you next meeting.
Thank you. I'm going to work on my golf swing, so...
All right, is there anybody else in the audience besides DBAT that wants to say anything to the Plan Commission? And with no one coming forward, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
Commissioner Carroll, second by Commissioner Plateau. Roll call, please.
Ken Carroll.
Yes.
Jan Platau.
Yes.
Jeff Peterson.
Yes.
Cheryl Slavazewski.
Yes.
And Bill Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Meeting adjourned at 7:47. Thank you again for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.